Good evening. I'll call this December 9th, 2025 regular board meeting to order. Ms. Dance, all board members are present. We appreciate that. We will begin tonight with the invocation from Jeff Sullivan and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Gates Hale and Dr. Pierce. I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, good evening, board members. It is my pleasure to introduce to you all Gates Hale. We're honored to have him with us. He's a senior at Clayton High School who is known in the Clayton community for his outstanding commitment of leadership and determination, and his parents are here tonight with him, support him. Thank you all for being here. Through his consistent hard work as senior class president, as a member of the National Honor Society, junior marshal, suited ambassador, a member of the boys lacrosse team, and more, he has demonstrated exceptional character and dedication. His positive attitude has made him a role model for his peers and an asset to our school community. His dedication both inside and outside the classroom reflects a strong work ethic and a genuine desire to be an excellent representative of the Clayton community. There is no doubt that Gates will make a positive impact as he continues in the next steps of his journey after high school, just as he has here in Comet Country. We celebrate his achievements and look forward to all the success his future holds. Gates serves on my leadership team, superintendent's leadership team. He has provided some great insight and feedback that I genuinely appreciate, and they will make sure. I also remind everybody that they will be supporting the Comets on Friday night and would like for you to join them as well before we get started today. So Gates will be leading us in the pledge of allegiance today.
We'll stand for the invocation and we'll follow it with the pledge of allegiance.
Today, we thank you for the time that we could come together as a group and serve the citizens of Johnston County. We just want to take a moment of this time just to give thanks and for the blessings that you bestow upon us. And we thank you for the opportunity that we can celebrate Christmas coming up soon, and may we truly reflect on the true meaning. We thank you for your son, who was born many years ago, who later gave his life on a cross for our salvation and eternal life. Now, as we approach the Christmas season, we know in a couple of weeks that our students will be taking, our high school students will be taking exams. We just pray that you're your guiding hand and pray that you'll give those students peace and confidence and comfort knowing as they approach that, as they approach those exams. Watch over them, bless them as we approach the Christmas season and the break, that you'll keep our students and parents and faculty safe. God, just give our administrators and teachers an opportunity just to be with their family, to recharge their batteries as we get ready for the second semester, and watch over our, watch over the kids. Now, God, we just ask, I ask that you, as a, as a board, that you'll just give us wisdom, clarity of thought, as we do what's best for the students of Johnston County, and that every action and everything we say will exalt you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Gates.
Thank you, Gates, and your family. I will now entertain a motion to go into closed session.
The Madam Chair, I move that we enter into closed session pursuant to Johnston, to the General Statute 143, 318, 11A, 1, 3, 5, and 6, to prevent the disclosure of confidential personal information under General Statute 115C, 321, to consider matters relating to the initial employment of an individual employee, to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and to discuss the handling of the following cases. One, TB by and through his guardian ad llet, PN versus Johnston County Board of Education, case number 25CV005367500. Number two, MW by CW and JW versus Johnston County Board of Education, 25EDC04074. And three, RJ versus Towne of Smithfield, case
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Ms. Antoine, I'm not sure who said it first. Any discussion? Here or none, I'll call for the vote to go into closed session. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We are now in closed session.
Watching these students this year, there's been incredible engagement, which is fantastic, especially for all the years that we have offered it. It just seems that students are more excited to just figure out what this is and what, what they can do and play around with. There was a exhibit just over at the Novo Nordisk exhibit where students were using what looked like a salad spinner, and they had all these beads, and they were just hitting it so hard that they were, they were learning about how they can separate different sides of beads out, and it was just, it was just really neat to see them engage and loving how this was happening.
I thought it was a real special thing that Joko Works gives us this opportunity and to show us what we can do and how we can help our community, and how important it is that we could stay at home and close to our families.
There's been a lot of jobs, like friendly people coming up to me and asking me if I would like to take a look at their business. I feel like it's been really good seeing other people walk around and interact with that, and it's just been really fun.
It's amazing. I actually, I really like it. I like how it shows, it shows you different careers you could pursue and how, and the qualifications for it and what you have to do.
And we have seen trends of the impacts of this eighth grade event years later having an effect on our post-secondary placement. One of the things in CTE that we really care about and in Johnston County public schools is that students not only get to that stage at graduation, but that they walk off to that, off of that stage and have the skills, knowledge, and aptitudes to make their future goals and plans a reality. So I think we're definitely seeing the ripple effects of this event that happens in middle school.
I think it's a really good experience for people that don't know what they want to do and for people that do also, because it lets you explore more of what you think you're gonna like and things you might not have thought you would have liked at all, but you figure out more about you eventually like.
If we focus on what we can control while we have them here, we can make a difference in the lives of our students. So our purpose will be fulfilled if we can remember that we can make a difference while we have them here. I am Takisey Dunston, principal at Benson Elementary. I have been here for 11 years. When I walk into Benson Elementary every day, what inspires me is knowing that I have students, staff, and parents that are counting on me to make this the best place for learning, to make this the best place to work, to make this the best place to send students while you're at work as a parent. This is, it's just one of my passions to be here. Being named principal of the year personally means that I have set the tone and provided an environment for staff and students, parents, community to come in and feel that they have a place that they can call home. Being named principal of the year allowed me to, to recognize that what I'm doing here at Benson Elementary has been seen, it is seen, and that there, a difference has been made in the environment. It's, it's hard when I see students that have a difficult time separating from their parents. I so understand that. Nobody wants to separate from that safe space, that safe person. And so that's why it's so important that I build an environment or establish an environment that will allow students to see it as a home away from home and feel the joys of being here. It is just always important for me to provide that place that they want to come to. My north star is making sure that teachers and students come to an environment that will support them in learning and in teaching. I want students to come and feel good about being at school, excited about learning. I want teachers to come in to feel the joys of being a teacher and having the opportunity to work with students day in and day out, not thinking of it as a chore or even work, but something that's fun, that they enjoy doing. And if the teachers come in with that passion, then that passion is then transferred to our students, and our students come in with that same thrill of being at school and being excited about learning new things and showing what they are capable of doing. Our ultimate goal here at Benson Elementary is to be the first Title I school in Johnston County to be an A-performing school. It is our goal that we have set, and we are working hard to achieve. So we haven't gotten there, but it's coming.
Welcome to Johnston County Public Schools, where there's always something great happening. Today, we're taking you on a visual tour, giving you a major update on our exciting construction and bond projects. Our first stop is Cooper Academy, a campus that's undergone a massive renovation and revitalization. Thanks to the 2022 bond, we added 20 classrooms, new offices, resource rooms, staff workrooms, and much-needed group restrooms. These additions have truly tied the school together, and Cooper is already getting a boost from the 2024 bond. The entire campus now features a brand-new, state-of-the-art fire alarm system. Next up is Swift Creek Elementary, a truly exciting addition to our district. This marks our 25th elementary school, a testament to Johnston County's vibrant growth. This stunning, over 900-capacity school showcases vibrant colors and brilliant economic design. The construction of the new Wilsons Mills High School, or WMHS, is progressing rapidly and remains on schedule for its fall 2026 opening. Visit the site today, and you'll see significant progress outside. All spectator stands are in place, and the athletic fields are either fully installed or well underway. The exterior of the building is nearing completion, giving a clear view of the finished structure. Inside, work is moving just as quickly. The first and second levels are heavily sheet rocked, framing is nearly complete, and crews have even begun priming the walls. We are so pleased with the speed and quality of this construction and look forward to sharing more milestones as we head toward the 2026 school year. We had the opportunity, thanks to the county commissioners, to go ahead and reduce overcrowding and remove mobiles at Cleveland High School. This was a fast-paced project that was completed in time for students to come back to school. This addition made it possible to remove all the mobiles on campus and make a secure traversal between classes without the need to go outside or to mobiles. During the October 28, 2025 special session meeting, the Johnston County Board of Education voted unanimously to approve the Clayton High rebuild project. This exciting, long-awaited project will provide state-of-the-art facilities for Johnston County students, including 99 total teaching spaces, 19 CTE classes/labs, 13 science labs, a main and auxiliary gym, athletic fields and facilities, an extraordinary auditorium with a seating capacity of 762, and so much more, providing the learning spaces Clayton area families will be proud of for many years to come. The new 278,000-square-foot facility will serve as a cornerstone for 21st-century learning, designed with a focus on safety and security, state-of-the-art learning environments, athletic and fine art spaces, and innovative technology and learning labs. While the design embraces modern educational needs, it also preserves elements of the school's historic culture that have defined generations of Clayton Comets. The Johnston County Board of Commissioners will vote on the project during their upcoming November 2025 regular scheduled meeting. JCPS plans to begin construction soon. The 2024 bond is already putting shovels in the ground across the county. Currently underway, we have the full buildout of Thanksgiving Elementary, adding six classrooms. Cleveland Elementary and Four Oaks Elementary are both receiving major, much-needed HVAC overhauls to bring them up to today's standards. And finally, projects in the design phase include additions at McGee's Elementary to add two new four classroom wings, a new metal roof project over at East Clayton Elementary, and an exciting track and tennis court upgrade starting at North Johnston High in May of 2026. North Johnston High will also be receiving a press box for their baseball/softball field. That will start in the next few weeks.
Johnston County eighth graders have a lot to think about after a two-day event aimed at helping them find their jobs of the future. The Joko Works Career Fair introduced those students to major companies like Novo Nordisk. WRAL's Grace Holland found out how we can prepare future workers when the job market is changing rapidly.
What's your dream job?
Being a medical surgeon.
My dream job, it's actually quite complex.
Astronaut.
I do want to be like an instructor or something.
A sports agent.
These Johnston County middle schoolers are hoping to meet the right people to make their dreams happen.
To be a farmer.
Why?
Running big, heavy machine and taking care of a field every day.
The Joko Works Career Expo.
So you'd start out as an apprentice and then you just work your way up.
Inviting about 3,500 eighth graders to learn about the companies in their communities.
We're really hoping that the kids can see themselves, you know, maybe working at Novo Nordisk one day.
Bio-pharma is a, is a really big industry, and it's growing rapidly in eastern North Carolina. And from our walks of life, you have an opportunity in bio-pharma.
Organizers work closely with the county school district.
It's significantly important.
And host Johnston Community College.
This is the best opportunity for us because we catch them just at such a young age.
To make sure students are ready for what comes after graduation.
We've seen a couple of classes already who have, who came through this as eighth graders have graduated, and now they're into college or the workforce.
They'll also have the option to do mock job interviews and internships through Joko Works in high school.
Learning about more things can really help my mind to grow and understand there's not just one choice out there, there's multiple of them.
In Johnston County, Grace Holland, WRAL News.
Welcome to Johnston County Public Schools, where innovation meets excellence and every student is inspired to soar. With over 37,000 students and more than 5,000 dedicated professionals, we are more than just a school district. We are a family, a vibrant, growing, diverse community with one clear goal: academic excellence. Our north star: student proficiency and academic growth. And by staying true to this vision, Johnston County Public Schools has earned district-wide recognition for excellence. As our population grows, so does our commitment. With the help of our Board of Commissioners and dedicated stakeholders, we're building new schools, modernizing facilities, and creating innovative learning environments designed for 21st-century success. This is a community-wide effort, a partnership built on trust, collaboration, and a shared vision for the future. At Johnston County Public Schools, we believe that every student deserves the opportunity to thrive, in the classroom and in life. And every educator and employee deserves a career where they can grow and make an impact. We are Johnston County Public Schools, united in purpose and committed to excellence. Join us as we build the future, one student at a time.
We are getting our first look of renderings of the new Clayton High School.
During its meeting last week, members voted to approve a project that would rebuild Clayton High School.
We're also getting our first look at plans for the new Clayton High School.
Clayton High School getting a major makeover.
Clayton High School is now on the books for a rebuild.
Johnston County Board of Education voted to approve that project last night. It will include a new 278,000-square-foot facility with state-of-the-art learning and athletic spaces, labs as well. Full completion is expected to be in the fall of 2028, costing more than $134 million. Now, according to school leaders, this new campus will help meet the demand of their growing district. growing district.
Watching these students this year, there's been incredible engagement, which is fantastic, especially for all the years that we have offered it. It just seems that students are more excited to just figure out what this is and what, what they can do and, and play around with. There was a exhibit just over at the Novo Nordisk exhibit where students were using what looked like a salad spinner and they had all these beads and they were just hitting it so hard, but they were, they were learning about how they can separate different sized beads out and it was just, it was just really neat to see them engage in loving how this was happening.
Um, I thought it was a real special thing that, uh, Joe Co Works gives us this opportunity and to show us what we can do and how we can help our community and how important it is that we could stay at home and close to our families.
There's been a lot of jobs, like friendly people coming up to me and asking me if I would like to take a look at their business. I feel like it's been really good seeing other people walk around and interact with that and it's just been really fun.
It's amazing. It, I actually, I really like it. I like how it shows, it shows you different careers you could pursue and how, and the qualifications for it and what you have to do.
And we have seen trends of the impacts of this 8th grade event years later having an effect on our post-secondary placement. One of the things in CTE that we really care about and in Johnston County Public Schools is that students not only get to that stage at graduation, but that they walk off to that, off of that stage and have the skills, knowledge, and aptitudes to make their future goals and plans a reality. So I think we're definitely seeing the ripple effects of this event that happens in middle school.
I think it's a really good experience for people that don't know what they want to do and for people that do also, because it lets you explore more of what you think you're gonna like and things you might not have thought you would have liked at all, but you figure out more about and you eventually like.
And if we focus on what we can control while we have them here, we can make a difference in the lives of our students. So our purpose will be fulfilled if we can remember that we can make a difference while we have them here. I am Tekezi Dunston, Principal at Benson Elementary. I have been here for 11 years. When I walk into Benson Elementary every day, what inspires me is knowing that I have students, staff, and parents that are counting on me to make this the best place for learning, to make this the best place to work, to make this the best place to see students while you're at work as a parent. This is, uh, it's just one of my passions to be here. Being named Principal of the Year personally means that I have set the tone and provided an environment for staff and students, parents, community, to come in and feel that they have a place that they can call home. Being named Principal of the Year allowed me to, to recognize that what I'm doing here at Benson Elementary has been seen, it is seen, and that there, a difference has been made in the environment. It's, it's hard when I see students that have a difficult time separating from their parents. I so understand that. Nobody wants to separate from that safe space, that safe person. And so that's why it's so important that I build an environment or establish an environment that will allow students to see it as a home away from home and feel the joys of being here. It's just always important for me to provide that place that they want to come to. My North Star is making sure that teachers and students come to an environment that will support them in learning and in teaching. I, I want students to come and feel good about being at school, excited about learning. I want teachers to come in to feel the joys of being a teacher and having the opportunity to work with students day in and day out, not thinking of it as a chore or even work, but something that's fun that they enjoy doing. And if the teachers come in with that passion, then that passion is then transferred to our students and our students come in with that same thrill of being at school and being excited about learning new things and showing what they are capable of doing. Our ultimate goal here at Benson Elementary is to be the first Title I school in Johnston County to be an A-performing school. It is our goal that we have set and we are working hard to achieve. So we haven't gotten there, but it's coming.
Welcome to Johnston County Public Schools, where there's always something great happening. Today, we're taking you on a visual tour, giving you a major update on our exciting construction and bond projects. Our first stop is Cooper Academy, a campus that's undergone a massive renovation and revitalization. Thanks to the 2022 bond, we added 20 classrooms, new offices, resource rooms, staff workrooms, and much-needed group restrooms. These additions have truly tied the school together, and Cooper is already getting a boost from the 2024 bond. The entire campus now features a brand-new, state-of-the-art fire alarm system. Next up is Swift Creek Elementary, a truly exciting addition to our district. This marks our 25th elementary school, a testament to Johnston County's vibrant growth. This stunning, over 900-capacity school showcases vibrant colors and brilliant economic design. The construction of the new Wilsons Mills High School, or WMHS, is progressing rapidly and remains on schedule for its fall 2026 opening. Visit the site today and you'll see significant progress outside. All spectator stands are in place, and the athletic fields are either fully installed or well underway. The exterior of the building is nearing completion, giving a clear view of the finished structure. Inside, work is moving just as quickly. The first and second levels are heavily sheet rocked. Framing is nearly complete, and crews have even begun priming the walls. We are so pleased with the speed and quality of this construction and look forward to sharing more milestones as we head toward the 2026 school year. We had the opportunity, thanks to the county commissioners, to go ahead and reduce overcrowding and remove mobiles at Cleveland High School. This was a fast-paced project that was completed in time for students to come back to school. This addition made it possible to remove all the mobiles on campus and make a secure traversal between classes without the need to go outside or to mobiles. During the October 28, 2025 special session meeting, the Johnston County Board of Education voted unanimously to approve the Clayton High rebuild project. This exciting, long-awaited project will provide state-of-the-art facilities for Johnston County students, including 99 total teaching spaces, 19 CTE classes slash labs, 13 science labs, a main and auxiliary gym, athletic fields and facilities, an extraordinary auditorium with a seating capacity of 762, and so much more, providing the learning spaces Clayton area families will be proud of for many years to come. The new 278,000-square-foot facility will serve as a cornerstone for 21st century learning, designed with a focus on safety and security, state-of-the-art learning environments, athletic and fine art spaces, and innovative technology and learning labs. While the design embraces modern educational needs, it also preserves elements of the school's historic culture that have defined generations of Clayton Comets. The Johnston County Board of Commissioners will vote on the project during their upcoming November 2025 regular scheduled meeting. JCPS plans to begin construction soon. The 2024 bond is already putting shovels in the ground across the county. Currently underway, we have the full buildout of Thanksgiving Elementary, adding six classrooms. Cleveland Elementary and Four Oaks Elementary are both receiving major, much-needed HVAC overhauls to bring them up to today's standards. And finally, projects in the design phase include additions at McGee's Elementary to add two new four-classroom wings, a new metal roof project over at East Clayton Elementary, and an exciting track and tennis court upgrade starting at North Johnston High in May of 2026. North Johnston High will also be receiving a press box for their baseball/softball field that will start in the next few weeks.
Johnston County 8th graders have a lot to think about after a two-day event aimed at helping them find their jobs of the future. The Joe Co Works Career Fair introduced those students to major companies like Novo Nordisk. WRL's Grace Holland found out how we can prepare future workers when the job market is changing rapidly.
What's your dream job?
Uh, being a medical surgeon.
My dream job, it's actually quite complex.
Astronaut.
I do want to be like an instructor or something.
A sports agent.
These Johnston County middle schoolers are hoping to meet the right people to make their dreams happen.
To be a farmer.
Why?
Uh, just running a big, heavy machine and taking care of a field every day.
The Joe Co Works Career Expo.
So you'd start out as an apprentice and then you just work your way up.
Inviting about 3,500 8th graders to learn about the companies in their communities.
We're really hoping that the kids can see themselves, you know, maybe working at Novo Nordisk one day.
BioPharma is a, is a really big industry and it's growing rapidly in eastern North Carolina. And from our walks of life, you have an opportunity in bioPharma.
Organizers work closely with the county school district.
It's significantly important.
And host Johnston Community College.
This is the best opportunity.
This is the best opportunity for us because we catch them just at such a young age.
To make sure students are ready for what comes after graduation.
We've seen a couple of classes already who have, who came through this as 8th graders have graduated and now they're into college or the workforce.
They'll also have the option to do mock job interviews and internships through Joe CoWorks in high school.
Learning about more things can really help my mind to grow and understand there's not just one choice out there, there's multiple of them.
In Johnston County, Grace Holland, WRRL News.
Welcome to Johnston County Public Schools, where innovation meets excellence and every student is inspired to soar. With over 37,000 students and more than 5,000 dedicated professionals, we are more than just a school district. We are a family, a vibrant, growing, diverse community with one clear goal: academic excellence. Our North Star: student proficiency and academic growth. And by staying true to this vision, Johnston County Public Schools has earned district-wide recognition for excellence.
Welcome back. We are so thrilled to have all of you here and look forward to some celebrations upcoming. But first, I will turn it over to Dr. Pierce.
Good afternoon. I am Dr. David Pierce, Superintendent of Johnston County Public Schools, and momentarily the board will begin its organization meeting to determine its next board chair and vice chair. I would like to note that a quorum has been established and that all seven board members are present. According to Board Policy 2200, if necessary, at any meeting to elect officers, I, as the superintendent, will serve as the chair of the board for the purpose of electing a chair. Once the board chair is elected, that individual will preside over the election of the vice chair and then proceed to preside over the meeting. According to Board Policy 2342, voting methods before the board may vote on any matter, there must be, for there to be there, must be a motion and a second to that motion. So for each one, we gotta have a motion and a second. With that said, I am now opening the floor for nominations for the office of chair.
I'll make a nomination for Lynn Andrews.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to close nominations for board chair.
So moved.
Do I have a second to that? All right. All those in favor of the nomination indicate by show of hands, please. Any opposed? Show of hands. Congratulations, Ms. Andrews. You are the board chair, and I will now hand the running of the meeting over to you to conduct the election of vice chair.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you, board members. I will now open the floor for nominations of vice chair.
I'll nominate Kevin Donovan.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? If I do not have a second, that motion dies. Do I have another motion?
I nominate Terry Tippett.
Do I have a second? That motion dies. Do I have another nomination?
I will again nominate Kevin Donovan.
Do I have a second? Without a second, that motion dies. Any other motion?
I nominate Terry Tippett once more.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second. Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to close the nominations.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Terry Tippett as vice chair, please indicate by raising your hand. Any opposed? Three, what was it? Are you opposed? So it's four, three, so it does not carry. I will, I will again, just.
Yeah, status quo remains if we don't, if we don't have a positive motion with the majority vote.
Okay, any other, I just.
So without a majority vote, we continue with motions until we get one that passes.
Do I continue with motions?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion.
One more time, Kevin Donovan.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Do I have any other nominations?
I'll nominate Terry Tippett one more time.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. So now I have before me Kevin Donovan. I'll call for that vote first. All those in favor?
Have a discussion first.
Oh, you can have discussion, yeah.
I have concerns with Kevin Donovan, given the legal actions and consequences that happened a year ago, about a year ago, the, under which he took immunity pleas for actions that removed another board member from this board. I find it contrary to what we should have as a vice chair.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for, since Kevin was nominated first, I'll call for the vote of Kevin Donovan. All those in favor of Kevin Donovan as vice chair, please raise your hand. I will say that, yes. Any opposed? All right, I'll, I think that does it. Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Kevin, you've been elected as vice chair. Okay, we, as we reorganize up here, we will move into our special recognitions, and I'll call Mr. Carr.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is a great day to be at the Johnston County Board of Education meeting for many reasons. One of the reasons is today we get to recognize four outstanding individuals who are known within our district as living legends. Board Chair Andrews, Vice Chair Donovan, members of the board, Superintendent Pierce, and distinguished guests. Today, I have the privilege of presenting this year's group of Living Legends Award recipients. This group of four individuals have spent their careers in education, impacting thousands of lives, and transforming the educational landscape of Johnston County Public Schools. Over the next few moments, we will share background information about these individuals and provide an opportunity for each person to take a picture with Chair Andrews and Dr. Pierce, after which they will provide comments. Before we begin, I want to recognize Ms. Carolyn Ennis, who is very instrumental in this process. She is a living legend in herself, in her own rights, and I always make mention that she makes sure that I do everything like she said is supposed to be done. She's, and so without further ado, Ms. Ennis, thank you so much for your contributions to the school system and for what you've done to make this event possible. Without further ado, please direct your attention to the monitors as we present our first 2025 Living Legend Award recipient, Ms. Deborah Avery.
Mrs. Deborah Avery exemplifies dedication throughout her distinguished career in education. She earned her bachelor's degree from Meredith College and a master's degree from Campbell University, and she holds National Board Certification in Adolescent and Young Adulthood Mathematics. Mrs. Avery taught grades nine to 12 at Smithfield-Selma High School for 31 years, from 1977 to 2008, teaching every mathematics course offered, from general math through AP Calculus. She remained actively involved in both local and state educational organizations throughout her career. Her commitment extends beyond the classroom into her church, civic, fraternal, and social organizations, all focused on strengthening the community. Her professional affiliations include Delta Kappa Gamma, NCAE, NEA, the North Carolina Council of Teachers of Mathematics, and the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics. Among her honors, she was named Teacher of the Month in 2008 by the Smithfield-Selma Area Chamber of Commerce and was selected to attend the North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching three times, including once as a facilitator. Mrs. Avery is a member of First Baptist Church in Smithfield, North Carolina, where she volunteers with the church's clothes closet ministry. Reflecting on her instructional approach, she shared, "Serving as a cooperating teacher for several North Carolina State student teachers and as a mentor for many novice teachers, I worked to model the importance of creating a positive classroom environment where all students could be successful. Because students have different learning styles and varying levels of confidence in mathematics, it is essential for them to connect prior knowledge with future real-world applications." She added, "From the moment I stepped into the North Johnston High School classroom of Mrs. Celia McRae, I knew I wanted to be a math teacher like her, organized, direct, and genuinely caring for students both inside and outside the classroom. When my daughter Paige told me she was transferring from South Johnston to teach at Smithfield-Selma where I worked, I was grateful to Mr. Jake Jacobs for giving us the opportunity to be colleagues. I enjoyed the best two years of my career working alongside my daughter." Congratulations to Mrs. Deborah Avery, a 2025 JCPS Living Legend.
That was so interesting. I run into people all the time that I've taught, and it's been so many years, I can't remember if they're the parent of somebody I taught, now they're the grandparents of somebody I taught. But I was telling Danny not long ago, I was watching one of the board meetings and I said, "Taught him, taught him, taught his children, taught his children." I was going around the room, around, around the board. It's amazing. I'm very humbled and honored to receive this recognition today. Perhaps like most of the other honorees, I always knew I wanted to be a teacher. As a young girl, I spent countless hours playing school, either lining up my dolls and my stuffed animals to sit in straight lines of chairs or dragging my younger brother, Thomas, to sit in my quote "classroom." Johnston County Public Schools has been really good to my family over the years. In addition to my 31 years at Triple S, my Uncle Clyde Mazingo, which I spoke with Ms. Ennis about, they taught together, they worked together for many, many years. My Uncle Clyde worked over 40 years in Johnston County schools. I've had 31 years, and now our daughter Paige has had over 20 years in Johnston County schools. Much like what I, what I wrote, one of the things that I enjoyed doing was working as a supervising teacher for student teachers and also being a mentor. And those of you that have been teachers know that you get assigned a novice teacher and you help guide them, and over the years, those relationships have, have also stayed, stayed close. I always stress to the, to the student teacher and novice teachers to try to create a positive learning condition in the classrooms. And one of the main things that I tried, I tried to do was every, every year on the first day of school, I would have my students write a very short essay on, and Kevin probably remembers this, why I am like I am about mathematics. And they would kind of laugh about it because, you know, why would a math teacher make you write an essay? But I learned a lot from that because I found that most students come into the classroom and they have a real opinion about mathematics, and they can just about tell you why they love it or why they hate it, and they can almost always tell you which teacher caused them to feel that way. But also in writing that essay, they would, they would tell you things that they wouldn't say in front of the class about their learning styles, and I love to be called on, or don't ever call on me, that sort of thing. And so I did that every year, and I would save them and look at them throughout the year to see how that person had developed in the classroom. But like I said, I'm really proud that I was able to work with the Johnston County Schools all these years. You hear nowadays about people changing jobs. I think the average person stays about seven years in a job. I never had but one job my whole life. I student taught at Triple S with Charles Tucker, and he hired me that year, and I might have had five or six classrooms because we kept moving and building on, but I never had but one job. But I'm proud that I was able to have that one job with Johnston County Public Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Avery, and congratulations once again. At this time, we ask that you direct your attention to the monitors as we share and highlight our next Living Legend Award, Living Legend Award recipient, Mr. Keith Beeman.
Mr. Keith Beeman graduated as valedictorian of his class from Goldsboro High School. He went on to earn both his bachelor's and master's degrees from the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, where he was inducted into Phi Beta Kappa. He is married to Cynthia Beeman and is the father of Holly Narin and Matthew Beeman. His professional career includes service as an education consultant, adjunct instructor at Appalachian State University, associate superintendent for instruction, and assistant superintendent for accountability and technology for Johnston County Public Schools. Mr. Beeman's professional affiliations have included leadership positions such as past regional director of the North Carolina Science Teachers Association and past vice president and president of the North Carolina Science Leadership Association. He has also been active in the North Carolina Council of Teachers of Mathematics, the North Carolina Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development, the North Carolina American Association of School Administrators, Phi Delta Kappa, Phi Beta Kappa, and the Board of Directors of the North Carolina Fair Foundation. His community involvement includes service as a past board member and chair of the Smithfield State Employees Credit Union. He has also been engaged with the Smithfield Chamber of Commerce, Johnston County Youth Services, and the Boys and Girls Club. Mr. Beeman's honors include the NSTA Exemplary Science Program Award, Teacher of the Year at Princeton High School, Teacher of the Year finalist for Johnston County Schools, Administrator of the Year for Johnston County Schools, and Administrator of the Year for Region III. He is also a recipient of the prestigious Order of the Longleaf Pine. He offers this perspective on teaching. Effective teachers nurture the whole child academically, socially, and emotionally. Effective teachers do this by setting clear but appropriately challenging expectations in all three areas, regularly monitoring student progress in meeting those expectations, and adjusting instruction both during and, when appropriate, after the conclusion of instructional time. Congratulations to Mr. Keith Beeman, a 2025 JCPS Living Legend. Congratulations to Mr. Keith Beeman, a 2025 JCPS Living Legend.
I'd like you to join us. All right, here we go. One, two, three. Right, stay right there for me again. One, two, three. Right, and then Mr. Beeman, if I could get one of you just with yourself.
Just me?
(laughter)
You've been chosen.
All right, one, two, three.
Oh, no, no, you're not having that problem at all. Well, thank you. This is a tremendous, tremendous honor. It was exciting to see an envelope come from the Johnston County Public Schools with Carolyn Ennis's name up there in the return address, so I knew it had to be something special. And I really do appreciate this a great deal. I have so much enjoyed my time here in Johnston County Schools. I came to the central office, it was quite curious, and I had a reminder by one of the other honorees, just a few minutes ago, about what brought me to the central office. She has a picture of me as a young man who has dark hair and a little mustache, because he grew up because he was so young-looking that he was a high school teacher and he got confused with students. But it was sitting there by an Apple IIe computer. When I was at Princeton with Fred Bartholomew, I had a chance, because the business teachers were getting these computer things, and they were scared to death of them. They were TRS-80s, Tandy Radio Shack 80s, and they knew there was this little geeky kid that was teaching science down the hall, and they were going to a training, and so they asked, "Would you go to this training with us to kind of hold our hands and stuff?" And I said, "Sure." Well, I fell in love with the computers, and asked the next year, wrote a proposal to teach computer programming at Princeton, and Ms. Hales called me, and she said, "Mr. Beeman, I see that you have had this application to teach computer science or programming." I said, "Yes, ma'am." She said, "Well, internationally enough, I just got a piece of mail from the state. Every district is getting a computer resource teacher, and since that sounds like something you're interested in, would you like that position?" I said, "Well, what exactly is it?" And she said, "I have no idea."[769.01][769.01](laughter) And I said, "Yes," very quickly. And after that, I made it my business of finding folks to work with me that love kids, and that worked hard, they did what they said they were going to do. You know, one of the best things you can do as you work your way through, and you get a chance to work with other people, is to work with other people. When those people are dedicated to such a fine profession, and they'll do, would do anything for me, I'd do anything for them, but most of all, we all did everything we possibly could for the kids in Johnston County. I appreciate the honor. I'm glad I'm still living, so I could accept it.[822.81][822.81](laughter)
Thank you, Mr. Beeman, and congratulations once again. If you would, please join me in directing your attention to the monitors as we highlight our next Living Legend Award recipient, Mr. Haywood Watson.
Mr. Haywood Anthony Watson attended three elementary schools and graduated from North Johnston High School in 1969. He earned a Bachelor of Arts degree from Atlantic Christian College, followed by a Master's Degree, Principal Certification, and an Educational Specialist Degree from East Carolina University. Mr. Watson began his career teaching eighth-grade social studies at Smithfield Junior High. He later served as Assistant Principal at Smithfield Elementary and North Johnston Middle School, and subsequently as Principal of Corinth-Holders Elementary. He dedicated 32 years of service to Johnston County Public Schools. He is an active member of Mincy Chapel Free Will Baptist Church, where he has served in numerous roles, including Sunday School Superintendent, Adult Sunday School Teacher, Deacon Trustee, Senior Choir Member, Male Chorus Member, and Financial Secretary. Beyond his work in education, Mr. Watson has demonstrated significant community involvement. He has served on the Johnston Community College Board of Trustees, the Board of Directors of Newse Little Theater, the Johnston County Arts Council Board of Directors, and as Treasurer for Newse Little Theater. He is also a member of the Heritage Center. Mr. Watson has been widely recognized for his contributions and talents. His honors include Assistant Principal of the Year, an appreciation award for leadership and service to his church and community, and recognition from Mincy Chapel Bible Church School. He also received the Newse Little Theater Canon Award for Best Supporting Actor for his performance in Showboat. Additionally, he was inducted into Torchbearers, the 50-year Legacy Society at Barton College. Reflecting on effective teaching, Mr. Watson shared, "My philosophy of effective teachers for effective learning, and one that is valuable for new teachers, is that educators should meet students where they are academically, and teach them to the best of their abilities. By doing so, they help students learn all they can, and equip them to navigate the challenges of a technical age as they grow into productive citizens."
All right, one, two, three.
Anybody that knows me knows I don't like to do this kind of thing. First of all, I'd like to thank the board and Ms. Carolyn Ennis for this honor. It is, I'm very humbled, like you said, for this honor. Johnston County Schools have been very good to me. For 12 years, graduating from North Johnston High School in 1969, and then, when I finished Atlantic Christian College, I only applied to Johnston County Schools. I went to see Mr. Carlton Daltrey, I don't know if you remember him, and he sent me to see Ross Lane at Smithfield Junior High School, and that was my first position as a teacher. I taught eighth-grade social studies, and I can't tell you, it was kind of difficult to begin with. I thought that, you know, I always told my teachers that teaching was a calling. I thought I got the wrong call.[1106.63][1106.63](laughter) And I thought about quitting, but my colleagues, some advice I can give to beginning teachers, ask for help whenever you need it. Your colleagues will help you if you ask. And my colleagues told me, "Haywood, it will get better." And it did. It got better. And I taught for eight years. I did not get out of teaching because I disliked teaching. I went to my principal, who was Bill Parrish at the time, and asked him, "Should I get my masters in social studies?" And he said, "No, Hayward, I believe that you could do better helping students getting your degree in administration." So I did, and I thank him for that advice, because I think I affected more students that way. He said I would, and I think I did. It was just, as I said, Johnston County has been great to me. And while I was at Smithfield, my first teaching, my first assistant principal's position was at Smithfield Elementary, and there I met the love of my life.[1187.01][1187.01](laughter) This lady sitting in the front row over here. We got married in 1986. My children came, my son, Michael, came in '88, and my daughter came in '94. So because of Johnston County Public Schools, I got a family. And it's just, it's been a great ride for me. And if I could give some advice to teachers, just be, just be you. Love what you're doing, and I tried, I tried teaching a little bit after I became an administrator. I thought maybe I would, can do both. I would teach a class every once in a while, because I loved social studies. I didn't, as I said, I didn't get out of teaching because I disliked it. I thought I could affect more children through administration. And I taught every once in a while, but I found out that my job as an administrator was a little bit more tedious than I thought, and I just couldn't do it as often as I wanted to. But Johnston County had been great to me. And I would tell anybody going into this profession, that you need to be firm but fair. Firm but fair. Children like structure. Let them know that you love them, and you want the very best for them, but make sure you're firm with them, because you cannot teach them if you don't have control of them. So thank you so very much, Johnston County Schools, for this opportunity to be a part of such a great school system, and I'm so grateful. I am truly grateful for what Johnston County Schools has done for me.
Thank you, Mr. Watson, and congratulations once again. We all can see that he's still got it, the way he made Ms. Watson blush.[1344.71][1344.71](laughter) He's still, he's still got it. At this time, we're going to recognize our final Living with a Heart Award recipient, Ms. Vanessa Watson. If you would, please turn your attention to the monitors.
Mrs. Vanessa Watson is the wife of Mr. Haywood Watson, who is also being recognized as a living legend. They are the proud parents of two children, H. Michael and Vanessa Monique. A graduate of Fike High School in Wilson, North Carolina, Mrs. Watson went on to earn a Bachelor of Science in Library Science from East Carolina University. She served Johnston County Public Schools with distinction for 34 years as a media coordinator. Her professional experience includes service as media coordinator at Smithfield Elementary School, where she also held leadership roles as PTA President, and previously, PTA Secretary at West Smithfield Elementary School. She later continued supporting schools as a long-term substitute at East Smithfield Elementary and Micro Elementary. Additionally, she contributed two decades of service on the Johnston County Public Schools' Calendar Committee. Her professional affiliations included membership in NCAE and JCAE. Mrs. Watson is a founding member of Tabernacle of Prayer in Wilson, North Carolina. There, she has served in numerous roles, including Sunday School Teacher, Bible Study Teacher, Secretary, Missionary, Choir Member, and Trustee. She is also a member of the Heritage Center. Her recognitions include the JCPS Leading with the Heart Award, and nominations for JCPS Media Coordinator of the Year in 2015 and 2016. She offers this guiding thought for educators. Treat each student as you would want your daughter, son, niece, nephew, or cousin treated. Reflecting on her return to education, Mrs. Watson shared, "After six months of retirement, I happily returned to JCPS as a long-term substitute. This is a role I have truly enjoyed. Between West Smithfield and Micro Elementary, I have served in the following areas: media, music, exceptional children, as well as grades first, third, and fourth."
Well, my husband likes to say that I'm the talker in the family.[1554.47][1554.47](laughter) But at this moment, you know, words escape me. I do give God the glory for, as Keith said, being still living, to be able to accept this, and I appreciate the nomination. Thank you, Mrs. Ennis, thank you, board, thank you, Johnston County Schools. Thank you, family. Our children say that they're going to write a book, Perils of a Teacher's Kid. You can probably have a chapter in there. They talk all the time about having to sleep on the couch in the library, because you can't go home, because I have another class coming, or sleeping under their dad's desk because he had a ballgame, and he couldn't leave and go home and take you home, didn't matter if you were sick. But once upon a time, a long time ago, Johnston County Schools gave me a chance, and someone, when I was being interviewed for the job, the principal asked what I would do if parents didn't accept me. And actually, he said, "What if white parents don't accept you?" And I said, "I don't teach white children." And then I said, "I don't teach black children. I just teach children." I got the job, and I've been blessed for 34 years to be in that position. It was magical for me. All I ever wanted to be was a librarian. The librarian I had in elementary school in Brooklyn, New York, Mr. Huntingbaum, he inspired me so. I have a co-librarian back here. He inspired me so that from second grade to sixth grade, I worked with him in the library. Now, who lets a second grader come and work in the library? But he did, and I just knew, all I wanted to be was a librarian. Years later, when I retired, I didn't realize the impact that teachers, educators have on children. I had a letter from a former student who was by that time a coworker, and she said, "When I walked in the library and saw you, I knew I could be anything I wanted to be." So I encourage young people, young teachers, you are the hope for someone. Someone's looking at you and thinking, "I can do that. I can be that." And so I'm grateful. I'm also grateful for my husband. It's a blessing to be together in this journey. We're just, we are extremely blessed. We thank God for our daughter-in-law being here. Our children can thank Johnson County Schools, because they are here because of Johnston County Schools. Thank you again, and we appreciate, we're getting humbled by this.
Thank you, Ms. Watson, and congratulations once again. At this time, we are near the end of our Living Legend Award presentation. We ask that all four recipients, please come to the front. We're going to capture one final photo, and then, once we finish with the four, I think we failed to get a single photo of Ms. Avery, and so we'll capture that as well. And so we'll capture that as well. Congratulations once again to our recipients. If you all would, please help us celebrate them one more time. That concludes our presentation. If the recipients and their families, if you all would, we're going to exit this route and we're going to continue with our.
Thank you so much to all of you. You mean a great deal to us. Thank you. Thank you.
We'll go ahead and begin. All right, if we can have two on this side, three on this side. Yeah, yeah. As we prepare to begin, family members, parents, if you would, please feel free to come behind the board and capture all the photos that you would like. We understand that this is a very important moment for you all as you see your children be recognized for, for having great character. And while the parents come behind the board, if, if everyone in the building would, please help us celebrate the parents because we understand that character development is an essential part of childhood development. And we thank our parents for doing such a great job with rearing these children in the way that they have. So if you all would, please help us celebrate the parents. Our first Character Education Student Recognition for the evening is Mr. Yerick Pacheco. Did I get it correct? I got it right. Yerick is a fifth-grade student at Glendale-Kinley Elementary, where Ms. Kelly Holland is principal and is doing an outstanding job. Yerick has been recognized for compassion. Yerick was an easy choice for the Compassion Award. He shows kindness, empathy, and a positive spirit every day. He supports classmates learning English, helps peers who feel overwhelmed, and makes sure no one feels left out, whether in class, at recess, or during group work. Yerick notices needs, offers help without hesitation, and lifts others up with patience and genuine encouragement. His leadership and big heart inspire compassion in everyone around him. We are proud to celebrate him as a true Wildcat role model. Congratulations, Yerick Pacheco, for being recognized as the December Character Ed student for Glendale-Kinley Elementary. Next, we have Mr. Timothy Black, who is a fifth-grade student at Micro Elementary, where the principal is Ms. Carson Calaliati. Each fifth-grade teacher at Micro Elementary immediately agreed that Timothy Black was a great candidate for this award. Tim shows every positive character trait daily: self-discipline, compassion, respect, and strong problem-solving skills. Classmates trust him for help and advice, and he leads by example, staying focused even when others are off task. Tim treats everyone with kindness, greets adults warmly, and makes sure others feel included. He sets high expectations for himself and consistently works to uplift those around him. Tim is a remarkable young man, and Micro Elementary is proud to celebrate him. Congratulations, Tim Black, for being recognized as the December Character Ed student for Micro Elementary. Next, we have Mr. Jacob Talton. If you would, please raise your hand. Jacob is a tenth-grade student at North Johnston High, where the principal is the renowned Mr. David Allen, who has continuously improved the school in every aspect. Jacob has been recognized for being compassionate as well. Jacob Talton is a standout student at North Johnston High for many reasons, particularly his heart. As a member of the cross-country team, Jacob sacrificed his personal best at regionals to help a injured runner from, from another school finish the race. Despite other runners running past, he stopped, lifted the runner, and supported him to the finish so both could qualify. That is one of the many acts that he has done that has caught our attention. His actions exemplify the empathy he shows every day, encouraging teammates, supporting others, and leading with care as a flight commander in Air Force JRTC. And we are proud of Jacob and hope his example inspires others to show true compassion each and every day. Congratulations, Jacob Talton, for being recognized as the December Character Ed student for North Johnston High School. Our next student is Mr. Jacob Arant, an eighth-grade student at North Johnston Middle, where the one and only Heather Anders is the principal. Jacob is being recognized for being responsible. Jacob is an eighth-grade student at North Johnston Middle School and is being recognized for his outstanding responsibility. He completes his work diligently, consistently earns honor roll grades, and actively supports his classmates. Jacob frequently offers help to peers and staff, bringing positive energy to every situation. Known as a kind, dependable, and honest individual, he continually strives to do his best and seeks opportunities to make a difference in his school community. Congratulations, Jacob, on being recognized as the December Character Ed student for North Johnston Middle. And our final December Character Ed student is Mr. James Rife, a fifth-grade student at Pine Level Elementary, where Mr. Alan Saster is affectionately known as principal and also the mayor. James is being recognized for being respectful. James exhibits respect to his teachers and his peers at all times. His compassion for others shows as he never speaks unkind words and gets along with everyone. He works hard in his studies and never gives up. He shows emotional maturity when he stays focused on his work and never disrupts others or gets distracted himself. As a member of our safety patrol, his dependability helps to keep all students safe in ensuring that students are following the hallway rules each morning. Congratulations, James, for being recognized as, as the December Character Ed student for Pine Level Elementary. Please join me and celebrate each of our students. And at this time, the students can walk around and shake the board members' hands. The followers should be this way.
You have so many reasons to be so proud of these young people. And we just thank you so much for sharing your child with us in Johnston County Public Schools. Ms. Edmiston?
What an exciting night. First, our living legends, and now more recognition for some of our current employees. At this time, I have the pleasure of presenting to you the Employees of the Month for the month of December. First, we have Ms. Ida Martinez, Head Custodian at Pine Level Elementary. Ms. Martinez? Ms. Ida Martinez is a tremendous asset to Pine Level Elementary School, greeting students each morning by name and offering encouragement, especially to those who may struggle. An early riser, she ensures the building is clean and safe before anyone arrives and is quick to respond to custodial needs throughout the day. As a bus driver, she prioritizes student safety and communicates concerns proactively, often with solutions already in mind. Known for her warm smile, sense of humor, and strong work ethic, Ms. Ida brings positivity to the school community while taking her responsibilities seriously. She is deeply valued by students, staff, parents, and the broader Pine Level community. Prior to tonight's meeting, Ms. Martinez asked me to read something to Mr. Sasser and the Pine Level community. I want to say thank you to Mr. Sasser and Pine Level School because he gave me the opportunity to be a head custodian. And thank you to Mr. Jones, Ms. Sylvia, and everyone who has helped me to be who I am today. Thank you to my sons and Pine Level Elementary, Pine Level Elementary, who has helped them to learn and go to college and graduate. Mr. Sasser and Pine Level are family to me. Thank you. Ms. Martinez? Thank you for all you do for our students and staff at Johnston County Public Schools. Ida Martinez, our December Classified Employee of the Month. At this time, I have the pleasure to present to you the Certified Employee of the Month for the month of December, Garfield Baker. Mr. Garfield Baker is an outstanding eighth-grade science teacher at North Johnston Middle School, whose students regularly exceed expectations. He provides high-quality instruction, sets clear expectations, and serves as a strong role model for both academic and personal growth. In addition to teaching, he coaches boys soccer and supports colleagues with positivity and teamwork. Mr. Baker understands students' social and emotional needs and intentionally incorporates meaningful conversations to support the whole child. He is truly an asset to the North Johnston Middle School community. And Mr. Baker, tell them where you're from. So Mr. Baker was an international teacher that came to our district many years ago. And he's one of the first teachers that we sponsored in our district to stay in our country. So we're very glad to have Mr. Baker here. Thank you. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Baker, for all you do for the students of Johnston County Public Schools, Mr. Garfield Baker, our December Certified Employee of the Month.
Thank you to all of, all of, you know, it's been a real good night of celebrating our past and then looking toward our future. And we just appreciate everyone so very much. Board members, we now move to the part of the meeting, our agenda for the adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion to approve the agenda as it is written. Motion by Mr. Carroll, second by Ms. Lee. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the agenda as it is written, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, Dr. Pierce?
Yes, board members. Madam Chair, I ask for your approval of Consent Items One Through Nine.
I'll entertain a motion for approval of consent items one through nine. I have a motion by Mr. Donovan. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Tippett. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for approval of consent items one through nine. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Thank you. Ms. Whittington?
Good morning, Chair Andrews. Or good afternoon, still in morning. And it's been a long day. Thank you. Tonight, I'm here to share about our calendar adoption for twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. As you know, we started this process back in October, first of which we developed a committee that consisted of teachers, students, parents, community members, administrators, as well as central office staff. Following that development of the committee, they met numerous times, and you can go ahead through the, through the slides. They met four times. In those four meetings, they reviewed all of the legal requirements that are necessary to, for a calendar. They also, after reviewing that, and they created drafts and nominated two drafts which were put out for community feedback. Tonight, I want to share a little bit of that feedback. First of all, from our school responses, we received forty-six responses, four of which voted for Calendar A, thirty-two which voted for Calendar B, and ten which had no clear distinction. Noted among those school responses, Calendar B was favored at every level, elementary, middle, and high, as well as for reasons being that the student continuity, no long gaps before finishing grading period, and teacher planning and grading was noted. For the community responses, we received one thousand three hundred and forty-six total responses. Parents were eight hundred and fifty-eight, staff, three seventy-one, students, one hundred, and others were seventeen. And you can see from the chart above that a total of seven hundred and twenty-two mentioned that B would be their preference. And included in that feedback, written feedback, for the same reasons, basically ending the grading period or semester before Christmas or winter break was highly recommended, reducing student and staff stress during the holidays, and a more natural instructional break that doesn't require returning to finish exams or major assignments after the Christmas holidays.
This is, this is an action item. I'll entertain a mo.
So tonight, so tonight, it is the superintendent, Dr. Pierce, recommendation that we choose Calendar B for twenty-six, twenty-seven school year.
All right, this is an action item. I'll entertain a motion for approval. I have a motion by Mr. Tippett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Antoine E. Discussion? Hearing, hearing.
I'm just going to make the same statement I always make. Calendar law is something that's near and dear to my heart. Having balanced semesters is near and dear to my heart. Having exams before Christmas break is also near and dear to my heart. And again, I would like to encourage our legislators to give us calendar flexibility so that we can make the best decisions for our students because starting on August twenty-fourth, fifth is not it. So with that, I just wanted to make that statement. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote of the approval of the adopt, of the calendar which has been presented to us. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, six, one. Thank you. Ms. Young?
Good evening, board members. On behalf of Mr. Stephen Britt, I'll be presenting the proposed certified supplement schedule. The new schedule would move us from a percentage-based schedule to a step-based supplement schedule. There are three components of the certified supplements at Johnston County Public Schools. Component one is a monthly county tax dollar-funded supplement of $200. Component two is a semi-annual county tax dollar-funded supplement. And component three is a semi-annual state tax dollar-funded low-well supplement. The current supplement is a percentage of state salaries, meaning weaknesses within the state salary becomes a weakness in the local supplement. Roughly 42% of all teachers receive no pay increase with a step. Supplement increases are lumpy, a decent increase some years, and no increases other years. It is a challenge to request a budget for an unknown amount. County budgets are due before the state budget is known. A percent-based supplement may be unsustainable in the long run, given the likely decrease in low-well funds. The proposed certified supplement schedule creates scales with pay increases every single year over a 30-year career. No longer percentage-based on the state scale, teachers would see a pay increase without a state increase or even an approved state budget. This current year, we focused on increases for veteran teachers with attempts to smooth the lumpiness in the current scale. The differences between the old scale and the new scale would be added to the June supplement. A detailed presentation, supplement scales, and a feedback form was sent to all employees, and the results were overwhelmingly positive. A copy of all of these, along with an FAQ document, can be found on the JCPS dashboard. This proposed scale lays a strong foundation to build upon for years to come. A pay increase every year for 30 years. It is sustainable. It's independent of the state salary scale, and we can improve the scale with future county funding increases.
This is an action item, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Just so, our recommendation is that we move away from a percentage and go to the fixed supplement scale moving forward. That is our recommendation.
I'll entertain a motion for approval. I have a motion by Mr. Carroll. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Donovan. Any discussion?
I would just say, you know, what we got with the email and with what you presented, it was a very good explanation of what we're doing and very clear in terms of accomplishing what we want, given everybody gets a pay increase because it's very frustrating for employees, especially 16, 17, through 20-some years that were not recognized. So, I appreciate that.
Also, just to reemphasize that we're going to, this will be revisited in years to come. Don't think this is the way it's going to be for the next 10 years. So, just want to remind staff that it's something that we will definitely revisit as years to come to make sure we make adjustments to still be competitive with other counties.
And I think the issue was, in Finance Committee, we worked on this for a year, and there are things about it that I don't like, but I think the thing is, the old way of doing things with the percentage, you never knew what you're going to be asking the county commissioners for because we never knew what that percentage was going to be from our General Assembly. Now, I've had some teachers who have questioned going to this because their train of thought is they will lose money because of percentages, and the issue you have is if the General Assembly came back with a 5% increase, which that's not happened in a long, long time, but if the General Assembly came back with a 5% increase, we couldn't, we could not sustain that in Johnston County Public Schools with that kind of increase in teacher supplements. So, it's kind of a way to make the two ends meet and have a guarantee for something. So, it's, again, there are things about this I don't like, there are things about the other one I don't like, but it was a way that when we did it with Dr. Pierce and Mr. Britt and April was there, Jeff, and we put it together in the higher board, was just to try and find a way to meet in the middle, so to speak. It's the best way I can describe it.
And just, I think everybody probably understands, but our supplements come from local dollars, so we are dependent on the money we receive from our county commissioners to fund supplements, and so that's why you're seeing us go to what Mr. Tippett talked about, something we can sustain.
And so long as we ask our county commissioners every 70 years to help up the money within this framework, our teachers should still see increases as well, and that's important for us as a recruitment tool, but also as a retention tool.
Absolutely. Any other discussion? Anybody? Hearing none, I'll call for the approval of this proposed certified supplement as it has been presented. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any just, any ayes? Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Young? Ms. Edmondson?
At this time, I will present to you the Superintendent's Personnel Recommendations. First, we have a central administrator being recommended for a three-year contract. Mr. William Weaver is being recommended as Chief of Student Services.
This is an action item, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Tippett. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of this recommendation, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Next, we have two more central administrators. Dr. Christina Benson is being recommended as Human Resources Officer within Human Resources, and Mr. Robert Simpkins is being recommended as Executive Director of Human Resources and Classified Personnel.
This is an action item, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Tippett. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Carroll. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of this, these recommendations, please indicate.
Can we discuss quickly?
Yeah.
Point of order? Can we discuss?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I just want to clarify that these are not new positions, and in fact, your department has cut positions and eliminated some of the things and made more efficiency within your department. Right? Correct?
Yes. This is a realignment.
Yeah. Thank you for that. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of these recommendations, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
And then last, we have a recommendation for a two-year contract for principal. David Brody Massengill is being recommended for principal at South Johnston High School.
This is an action item, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Tippett. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Carroll. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote of this recommendation. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
And then finally, I would like to share with you an announcement from the Superintendent. Mr. Chad Jewitt, Principal at Thanksgiving Elementary School, will be transferring to Principal at Wilson's Mills High School.
And that's just a, that is effective?
January 1st.
January 1st. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Edmondson.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I mean, I'm going to move on to, we'll move on. Public comment, we'll come right back to in about five minutes. Updates from Chair, we only have a few Chairs and Board Chair. Policy Committee, Mr. Donovan?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. We had our last meeting on November 20th. We discussed four different policies with some minor changes. 4120, which is domicile requirements, we addressed some military family situations for attending JCPS. Policy 5070, 7350, and 7820, which is public records and personnel files, addresses the inclusion of all funding sources when reporting staff salaries. And 6340, the transportation contracts, we included background checks for drivers in the wording. We have, we're not going to have a meeting in December for the public, but our next meeting will be January 15th at 9:00 a.m., so I look forward to seeing y'all there.
Okay, and I just have a few things. It's very busy right now in our school system. I believe exams start for the high school on Friday, so please help support them in your thoughts and prayers. Clayton High School will be playing for the state championship on Friday in Chapel Hill at 8 o'clock against Greensboro Grimsley, so the town of Clayton will be empty on Friday night, I am sure, and a lot of other towns around here will be too. Winter sports have started, please support those. Also, there's band concerts going on, please support our fine arts programs. These students work so hard. Check out the schools in your area, see when those things are taking place. A lot of them will be next week. We do dismiss for the Christmas break on December the 19th. Are they getting out early? Is it like 1:30 or? Okay. Well, here, students, it's on the calendar, it says, here's, on the calendar, it says it's a full day, but guess what? It's not going to be, so we'll find out later what time you get to go home, but please continue to support your schools and your communities. Let's see, are we, real quick, you want to do your Swift Creek? We do have one advisory appointment, and I believe that's at Swift Creek Middle School?
Yes, ma'am. The Principal, Carrie Evans, at Swift Creek Middle School is making a recommendation to their parent advisory council. Jeremy Jordan has been approved by the Principal and the fellow board members for a recommendation of a three-year term.
Okay, now, I'll consider that the motion, I need a second. Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote of the approval of this advisory council. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? We'll take like a five-minute break, board members, and come back for a public comment. We'll take like a five-minute break, board members, and come back for a public comment.
Watching these students this year, there's been incredible engagement, which is fantastic, especially for all the years that we have offered it. It just seems that students are more excited to just figure out what this is and what they can do and play around with. There was an exhibit just over at the Novo Nordisk exhibit where students were using what looked like a salad spinner, and they had all these beads, and they were just hitting it so hard, but they were, they were learning about how they can separate different sized beads out, and it was just, it was just really neat to see them engage in loving how this was happening.
I thought it was a real special thing that Joko Works gives us this opportunity and to show us what we could do and how we can help our community, and how important it is that we can stay at home and close to our families.
There's been a lot of jobs, like friendly people coming up to me and asking me if I would like to take a look at their business. I feel like it's been really good seeing other people walk around and interact with that, and it's just been really fun.
It's amazing. I actually, I really like it. I like how it shows, it shows you different careers you could pursue and how, and the qualifications for it and what you have to do.
And we have seen trends of the impacts of this eighth grade event years later having an effect on our post-secondary placement. One of the things in CTE that we really care about, and in Johnston County Public Schools, is that students not only get to that stage at graduation, but that they walk off to that, off of that stage and have the skills, knowledge, and aptitudes to make their future goals and plans a reality. So I think we're definitely seeing the ripple effects of this event that happens in middle school.
I think it's a really good experience for people that don't know what they want to do, and for people that do also, because it lets you explore more of what you think you're gonna like, and things you might not have thought you would have liked at all, but you figure out more about and you eventually like.
And if we focus on what we can control while we have them here, we can make a difference in the lives of our students. So our purpose will be fulfilled if we can remember that we can make a difference while we have them here. I am Takisey Dunston, principal at Benson Elementary. I have been here for 11 years. When I walk into Benson Elementary every day, what inspires me is knowing that I have students, staff, and parents that are counting on me to make this the best place for learning, to make this the best place to work, to make this the best place to see students while you're at work as a parent. This is, it's just one of my passions to be here. Being named principal of the year personally means that I have set the tone and provided an environment for staff and students, parents, community, to come in and feel that they have a place that they can call home. Being named principal of the year allowed me to, to recognize that what I'm doing here at Benson Elementary has been seen, it is seen, and that there, a difference has been made in the environment. It's, it's hard when I see students that have a difficult time separating from their parents. I so understand that. Nobody wants to separate from that safe space, that safe person. And so that's why it's so important that I build an environment or establish an environment that will allow students to see it as a home away from home and feel the joys of being here. It's just always important for me to provide that place that they want to come to. My north star is making sure that teachers and students come to an environment that will support them in learning and in teaching. I want students to come and feel good about being at school, excited about learning. I want teachers to come in to feel the joys of being a teacher and having the opportunity to work with students day in and day out, not thinking of it as a chore or even work, but something that's fun that they enjoy doing. And if the teachers come in with that passion, then that passion is then transferred to our students, and our students come in with that same thrill of being at school and being excited about learning new things and showing what they are capable of doing. Our ultimate goal here at Benson Elementary is to be the first Title I school in Johnston County to be an A performing school. It is our goal that we have set, and we are working hard to achieve. So we haven't gotten there, but it's coming.
Welcome to Johnston County Public Schools, where there's always something great happening. Today, we're taking you on a visual tour, giving you a major update on our exciting construction and bond projects. Our first stop is Cooper Academy, a campus that's undergone a massive renovation and revitalization. Thanks to the 2022 bond, we added 20 classrooms, new offices, resource rooms, staff workrooms, and much-needed group restrooms. These additions have truly tied the school together, and Cooper is already getting a boost from the 2024 bond. The entire campus now features a brand-new, state-of-the-art fire alarm system. Next up is Swift Creek Elementary, a truly exciting addition to our district. This marks our 25th elementary school, a testament to Johnston County's vibrant growth. This stunning, over 900-capacity school showcases vibrant colors and brilliant economic design. The construction of the new Wilsons Mills High School, or WMHS, is progressing rapidly and remains on schedule for its fall 2026 opening. Visit the site today, and you'll see significant progress outside. All spectator stands are in place, and the athletic fields are either fully installed or well underway. The exterior of the building is nearing completion, giving a clear view of the finished structure. Inside, work is moving just as quickly. The first and second levels are heavily sheet rocked, framing is nearly complete, and crews have even begun priming the walls. We are so pleased with the speed and quality of this construction and look forward to sharing more milestones as we head toward the 2026 school year. We had the opportunity, thanks to the county commissioners, to go ahead and reduce overcrowding and remove mobiles at Cleveland High School. This was a fast-paced project that was completed in time for students to come back to school. This addition made it possible to remove all the mobiles on campus and make a secure traversal between classes without the need to go outside or to mobiles. During the October 28, 2025 special session meeting, the Johnston County Board of Education voted unanimously to approve the Clayton High rebuild project. This exciting, long-awaited project will provide state-of-the-art facilities for Johnston County students, including 99 total teaching spaces, 19 CTE classes slash labs, 13 science labs, a main and auxiliary gym, athletic fields and facilities, an extraordinary auditorium with a seating capacity of 762, and so much more, providing the learning spaces Clayton area families will be proud of for many years to come. The new 278,000-square-foot facility will serve as a cornerstone for 21st-century learning, designed with a focus on safety and security, state-of-the-art learning environments, athletic and fine arts spaces, and innovative technology and learning labs. While the design embraces modern educational needs, it also preserves elements of the school's historic culture that have defined generations of Clayton Comets. The Johnston County Board of Commissioners will vote on the project during their upcoming November 2025 regular scheduled meeting. JCPS plans to begin construction soon. The 2024 bond is already putting shovels in the ground across the county. Currently underway, we have the full buildout of Thanksgiving Elementary, adding six classrooms. Cleveland Elementary and Four Oaks Elementary are both receiving major, much-needed HVAC overhauls to bring them up to today's standards. And finally, projects in the design phase include additions at McGee's Elementary to add two new four-classroom wings, a new metal roof project over at East Clayton Elementary, and an exciting track and tennis court upgrade starting at North Johnston High in May of 2026. North Johnston High will also be receiving a press box for their baseball slash softball field. That will start in the next few weeks.
Johnston County eighth graders have a lot to think about after a two-day event aimed at helping them find their jobs of the future. The Joko Works Career Fair introduced those students to major companies like Novo Nordisk. WRRL's Grace Holland found out how we can prepare future workers when the job market is changing rapidly.
What's your dream job?
Being a medical surgeon.
My dream job, it's actually quite complex.
Astronaut.
I do want to be like an instructor or something.
A sports agent.
These Johnston County middle schoolers are hoping to meet the right people to make their dreams happen.
To be a farmer.
Why?
Just running big, heavy machine and taking care of a field every day.
The Joko Works Career Expo.
So you'd start out as an apprentice and then you just work your way up.
Inviting about 3,500 eighth graders to learn about the companies in their communities.
We're really hoping that the kids can see themselves, you know, maybe working in Novo Nordisk one day.
Bio-pharma is a, is a really big industry, and it's growing rapidly in eastern North Carolina. And from our walks of life, you have an opportunity in bio-pharma.
Organizers work closely with the county school district.
It's significantly important.
And host Johnston Community College.
This is the best opportunity for us because we catch them just at such a young age.
To make sure students are ready for what comes after graduation.
We've seen a couple of classes already who have, who came through this as eighth graders have graduated, and now they're into college or the workforce.
They'll also have the option to do mock job interviews and internships through Joko Works in high school.
Learning about more things can really help my mind to grow and understand there's not just one choice out there, there's multiple of them.
In Johnston County, Grace Holland, WRRL News.
Welcome to Johnston County Public Schools, where innovation meets excellence and every student is inspired to soar. With over 37,000 students and more than 5,000 dedicated professionals, we are more than just a school district. We are a family, a vibrant, growing, diverse community with one clear goal, academic excellence. Our north star, student proficiency and academic growth. And by staying true to this vision, Johnston County Public Schools has earned district-wide recognition for excellence. As our population grows, so does our commitment. With the help of our Board of Commissioners and dedicated stakeholders, we're building new schools, modernizing facilities, and creating innovative learning environments designed for 21st-century success. This is a community-wide effort, a partnership built on trust, collaboration, and a shared vision for the future. At Johnston County Public Schools, we believe that every student deserves the opportunity to thrive in the classroom and in life. And every educator and employee deserves a career where they can grow and make an impact. We are Johnston County Public Schools, united in purpose and committed to excellence. Join us as we build the future, one student at a time.
We are getting our first look of renderings of the new Clayton High School.
During its meeting last week, members voted to approve a project that would rebuild Clayton High School.
We're also getting our first look at plans for the new Clayton High School.
Clayton High School getting a major makeover.
Clayton High School is now on the books for a rebuild.
Johnston County Board of Education voted to approve that project last night. It will include a new 278,000-square-foot facility with state-of-the-art learning and athletic spaces, labs as well. Full completion is expected to be in the fall of 2028, costing more than $134 million. Now according to school leaders, this new campus will help meet the demand of their growing district. the demand of their growing district.
Watching these students this year, there's been incredible engagement, which is fantastic, especially for all the years that we have offered it. It just seems that students are more excited to just figure out what this is and what they can do and play around with. There was an exhibit just over at the Novo Nordisk exhibit where students were using what looked like a salad spinner and they had all these beads and they were just hitting it so hard, but they were learning about how they can separate different sizes of beads out. And it was just really neat to see them engage in loving how this was happening.
I thought it was a real special thing that Joe CoWorks gives us this opportunity and to show us what we can do and how we can help our community and how important it is that we could stay at home and close to our families.
There's been a lot of jobs, like friendly people coming up to me and asking me if I would like to take a look at their business. I feel like it's been really good seeing other people walk around and interact with that. And it's just been really fun.
It's amazing. I actually, I really like it. I like how it shows you different careers you could pursue and the qualifications for it and what you have to do.
And we have seen trends of the impacts of this 8th grade event years later having an effect on our post-secondary placement. One of the things in CTE that we really care about and in Johnston County Public Schools is that students not only get to that stage at graduation, but that they walk off of that stage and have the skills, knowledge, and aptitudes to make their future goals and plans a reality. So I think we're definitely seeing the ripple effects of this event that happens in middle school.
I think it's a really good experience for people that don't know what they want to do and for people that do also because it lets you explore more of what you think you're gonna like and things you might not have thought you would have liked at all, but you figure out more about and you eventually like.
And if we focus on what we can control while we have them here, we can make a difference in the lives of our students. So our purpose will be fulfilled if we can remember that we can make a difference while we have them here. I am Tekezi Dunston, principal at Benson Elementary. I have been here for 11 years. When I walk into Benson Elementary every day, what inspires me is knowing that I have students, staff, and parents that are counting on me to make this the best place for learning, to make this the best place to work, to make this the best place to send students while you're at work as a parent. This is, it's just one of my passions to be here. Being named Principal of the Year personally means that I have set the tone and provided an environment for staff and students, parents, community, to come in and feel that they have a place that they can call home. Being named Principal of the Year allowed me to recognize that what I'm doing here at Benson Elementary has been seen, it is seen, and that a difference has been made in the environment. It's hard when I see students that have a difficult time separating from their parents. I so understand that. Nobody wants to separate from that safe space, that safe person. And so that's why it's so important that I build an environment or establish an environment that will allow students to see it as a home away from home and feel the joys of being here. It's just always important for me to provide that place that they want to come to. My north star is making sure that teachers and students come to an environment that will support them in learning and in teaching. I want students to come and feel good about being at school, excited about learning. I want teachers to come in to feel the joys of being a teacher and having the opportunity to work with students day in and day out, not thinking of it as a chore or even work, but something that's fun that they enjoy doing. And if the teachers come in with that passion, then that passion is then transferred to our students. And our students come in with that same thrill of being at school and being excited about learning new things and showing what they are capable of doing. Our ultimate goal here at Benson Elementary is to be the first Title I school in Johnston County to be an A performance school. It is our goal that we have set and we are working hard to achieve. So we haven't gotten there, but it's coming.
Welcome to Johnston County Public Schools, where there's always something great happening. Today, we're taking you on a visual tour, giving you a major update on our exciting construction and bond projects. Our first stop is Cooper Academy, a campus that's undergone a massive renovation and revitalization. Thanks to the 2022 bond, we added 20 classrooms, new offices, resource rooms, staff workrooms, and much-needed group restrooms. These additions have truly tied the school together, and Cooper is already getting a boost from the 2024 bond. The entire campus now features a brand-new, state-of-the-art fire alarm system. Next up is Swift Creek Elementary, a truly exciting addition to our district. This marks our 25th elementary school, a testament to Johnston County's vibrant growth. This stunning, over-900-capacity school showcases vibrant colors and brilliant economic design. The construction of the new Wilsons Mills High School, or WMHS, is progressing rapidly and remains on schedule for its fall 2026 opening. Visit the site today, and you'll see significant progress outside. All spectator stands are in place, and the athletic fields are either fully installed or well underway. The exterior of the building is nearing completion, giving a clear view of the finished structure. Inside, work is moving just as quickly. The first and second levels are heavily sheet rocked. Framing is nearly complete, and crews have even begun priming the walls. We are so pleased with the speed and quality of this construction and look forward to sharing more milestones as we head toward the 2026 school year. We had the opportunity, thanks to the county commissioners, to go ahead and reduce overcrowding and remove mobiles at Cleveland High School. This was a fast-paced project that was completed in time for students to come back to school. This addition made it possible to remove all the mobiles on campus and make a secure traversal between classes without the need to go outside or to mobiles. During the October 28, 2025 special session meeting, the Johnston County Board of Education voted unanimously to approve the Clayton High rebuild project. This exciting, long-awaited project will provide state-of-the-art facilities for Johnston County students, including 99 total teaching spaces, 19 CTE classes/labs, 13 science labs, a main and auxiliary gym, athletic fields and facilities, an extraordinary auditorium with a seating capacity of 762, and so much more, providing the learning spaces Clayton area families will be proud of for many years to come. The new 278,000-square-foot facility will serve as a cornerstone for 21st-century learning, designed...
All right, welcome back. With no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Sullivan, do I have a second? Second by Ms. Lee. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, thank you, we are adjourned.